Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council Meeting to Order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Do we have roll call, please?
Alderman Collier.
Here.
Alderman Keenan.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski.
Here.
Alderman Spencer.
Here.
Alderman Benner.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Alderman Crowe Kramer.
The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing. The first public hearing is a special use permit application for Greg Miller, 222 Washington Street, to provide indoor, climate-controlled, non-occupant storage on a property within zoning non-conforming, zoning non-conformities in the I-2 general industrial district. Mr. Engelbert, would you like to tell us a little bit about this?
This special use permit application relates to a property at 222 Washington Street. It had been used as an office, and now the intention of the property owner is to use the facility for storage. Storage itself is a permitted use within the district. However, this site has a few zoning non-conformities in relation to landscaping, site design, et cetera. So, we have this special use permit process built in to handle situations like this. Plan Commission has not yet made a recommendation, so you won't see the item on the agenda tonight. However, the public hearing is still here for any interested party.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this this evening?
Hi, Sandra. This is Bill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I wanted to comment on this because while it currently is zoned industrial, if you look at your comprehensive plan, the 30-year comprehensive plan, the long, the future map shows this as what they call "community commercial," from Garfield Street up to the border with Nina. And under "community commercial," it is typically include neighborhood-serving, commercial uses, as well as larger retail uses, including restaurants, specialty retail, mid-box stores, and smaller shopping centers. They may also include churches, government branch offices, schools, parks, and other civic facilities. This was a physician's office, a professional office building. To me, this is our gateway into the community. A storage facility is not going to generate any increase in property value. It's not going to generate reinvestment into our community, especially on our main corridor, and after we've invested so many millions of dollars into our district and our downtown. And it's not a job creator. And especially with the unfortunate news today of the closing of Graphic Packaging, that's one thing we desperately are in need of. I'm opposed to the special use permit. And basically, it can be denied on the fact that it does not meet the comprehensive plan. Simple as that. I don't see this as any benefit to the community, and, in my opinion, I think it should be denied. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this topic? Seeing no one, we'll move on. We'll close that special hearing, and we'll move on to the Winnebago County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan for 2015 through 2019. Director Radke, do you have some comments on that?
Several years ago, federal government passed legislation that in order for local communities to receive federal grant funding, they need to adopt a local hazard mitigation plan in order to receive those grant funds for any pre-disaster mitigation projects. So, our local hazard mitigation plan is done in cooperation with Winnebago County, and Winnebago County has been working with the local municipalities and communities to put together their five-year update. Part of that requires a public hearing and presentation of the plan. So, tonight, we have the public hearing component, as well as consideration of a resolution adopting the natural hazards mitigation plan. The plan itself consists of a number of potential projects that could assist in the areas of flooding, drought, heat, extreme cold, those types of things. And City of Manassas listed in there for a few projects. We don't have huge flooding issues, which is a major component, but there are a couple, and they were identified in here. The other issues that have not been identified in the plan as it relates to the City of Manassas are relative to our stormwater management ponds, and that's because we just haven't adopted that plan yet. We will be starting to do that later this year, and then we can, this plan can be amended. We can include those projects in the, in the plan, and it's just a means of identifying them and setting priorities and initiatives. So, tonight was the public hearing to hear input on that.
With that, does anyone from the public have, wish to make any comments or have input on that? Seeing no one, we'll call the public hearing to a close. Item E is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone with general comments this evening that you would like the Common Council or city staff to hear? Should put you on the edge of the aisle, Sandy.
Oh, I have so many questions always. Okay. First of all, just the last 10 minutes I was sitting here, you had a video going regarding teamwork. There's absolutely nothing wrong with teamwork, but it kind of gave the impression that in order to succeed, you all have to vote the same. And to me, that's not teamwork. You each represent individual segments of our community. They each have an individual voice. It's working together and making sure that we all have an understanding of what's best for the community, but it doesn't mean that we fail if one of you votes against something. So, keep that in mind. There's, we're not a softball team, a football team, or gladiators up here. Okay. Now, two weeks ago, I attended your meeting because I want, I mentioned that the Redevelopment Authority had not met. It's two weeks later. There's still no agenda for the Redevelopment Authority. And according to your own bylaws, the annual meeting shall be, shall be held the first Tuesday of May of each and every year. Shall, that doesn't mean if you feel like it. That's like a direct order. It still hasn't been posted. We don't need Greg, the Community Development Director here, to call it. It's called by the Chair. So, the mayor could have called the Chair. Becky's on the Redevelopment Authority. She could have called the Chair. A meeting should be held, and it's simply to elect officers. What concerns me about this is that the Redevelopment Authority met four times last year, and yet we're entrusting them with Lake Park Villas and the redevelopment of our R. Donley project. The public is very concerned about what happens at R. Donley. If they can't meet for an orientation meeting, I'm very concerned about what the public input's going to be at that site. And then, secondly, in your agenda, there's a memo from Attorney Pam Captain regarding the hiring process. Well, I could tell you what number it is, but I'm confused what she means here. Basically, according to your own city code, again, the hiring process is when it's a department head, as in the case of community development, and unfortunately with Mark Radke leaving. It's basically run by the Personnel Committee, which is you. The interview process, the selection process, the narrowing down, and it's forwarded to the mayor. The mayor can accept your recommendation or deny it, but essentially, that thing gets forwarded to the Common Council. You have control over this, and it appears like from past memos and just recently that this is getting shifted to department heads and committees. I want you to take control of this. And she has a memo in here that I don't know what she means, but she says, "The Section 2-3-2 of the Code and Ordinances, and it applies to the hiring process, is self-conflicting." I'd like her to explain what "self-conflicting" is. It says here, "The appointment process: Should a vacancy occur in any of the positions described above," which includes the Director of Public Works, "Personnel Committee will interview applicants using the position requirements found. The committee shall then make its recommendation to the mayor, who may or may not make the appointment. In any event, such appointment is subject to confirmation by the Common Council." I don't see what "self-conflicting" means. It sounds pretty straightforward. I encourage the Common Council to take control. You're pretty much going to be working with a lot of inexperienced staff. You need to read code. You need to read state statutes and educate yourself. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll be discussing that in the Personnel Committee meeting this evening as well. Anyone else wish to make comments to the Common Council at this point? Seeing no one, we'll move on to report of department head, staff, and consultants. Chief Steika is here with the police recognition awards.
First and foremost, I'd be remiss if we didn't give equal billing, I guess, to Public Works, because this is also Public Works Week. And certainly, it's been outstanding to work in the City of Manassas as a police officer with the support that we get from Public Works. I can say that that's not the case in all communities, and sometimes it's adversarial, and it's really a two-way street between the Public Works Department. And as has been alluded to already, with Director Radke leaving, certainly hope his replacement will be just as accommodating, but the things that he has done and the leadership that he's provided over the years really gives a outstanding service to the community in the way that we're able to work together. We couldn't get to our calls in the winter if they didn't have the streets plowed the way they would. And I could go on and on of a list of about 100 things. So, thank you very much, Mark, and thanks to your crew. Normally, Police Week is the week before Public Works Week, but the way that they worked on the calendar this week, we share the week. But I did want to thank the Council for the opportunity to allow me to recognize the officers and citizens this year that have really made it help Manassas be a better place. Police Week itself is a time that we honor those that have given their lives, police officers that have given their lives in the line of duty. Fortunately, that only happened a few times in the state of Wisconsin last year. But the realization is that the things that we do and the incidents that we are faced with, it could happen in this community, just as we thought as other things might not ever happen here. But it also gives us as an administration and a city a time to kind of step back and look to see, you know, what has the police department really done, and this is why we're here tonight. Last year, we responded to approximately just over 14,000 calls for service. One of those calls was on May 3rd, as we all know, at the Tressle Trail. Until recently, many of the names of the officers that were responded and involved in the incident, respectfully by the media, weren't published. This was also true for a number of the witnesses and the people that were on scene that ended up helping out Erin and her children after the incident. If you recall, there was a video that we did release from the pavilion at the park. It showed that everyone was running off the, off the bridge in the trail area. And then, all of a sudden, some people started going back and tending to Erin and her children after she had been shot. Today, we have a few of those people here that I really wanted to recognize. These folks, I believe, really embody the spirit of community members in the Fox Valley. They put their own lives at stake and ended up helping out Erin and her, her children in a, in a time of crisis. I don't believe Tom's right. No? Okay. We had invited a third person, but we have Sarah Buck, if you want to stand up, and Jeff Wolfe Graham. Both of them had just gotten off the trail themselves, were in the area of the park, and after hearing the shots fired, these are two of the people that you see actually running back to Erin to help her out. Sarah actually applied pressure to Erin's wounds until other staff had arrived, and Jeff was one of the 911 callers and as well as kind of looked after her children while Sarah was being tended to medically. So, we kind of get paid to do this stuff, not that we want it to, but for just yourselves who are just out there trying to enjoy a nice Sunday afternoon, for you to step up like that, I know that Erin certainly appreciates it, and we as a community appreciate it as well. So, I wanted to present you with certificates. Congratulations. Thank you as well. In addition, I wanted to present you with these coins. I don't know if you've seen these coins before. These coins, we actually had struck after the incident itself. On the one side of it is the responding agencies, both EMS, police, and fire, and it gives the location and picture of the Tressle itself. On the back half are the victims that did lose their lives on it. And we provided these coins to the family members and the first responders of all of that, of all of those agencies then that had a role in it. You certainly had a role in it that day, so these certainly mean a lot to the family members and the people that responded. I know this day certainly had to have impacted your lives substantially, so we wanted to give you a token of appreciation and kind of join that family for what you did that day. So, thank you very much. As I listed in my memo, we generally then recognize the officers at a Police Week dinner, and that dinner is usually the week before this council meeting. So, we haven't had dinner yet, so I can't really divulge who won all these different awards. But instead of pushing it all the way out into June, we did want to recognize a few of the people and give you a little bit about it. We have three Officer of the Year nominees. Two of them couldn't be with us. One's out of town at a training, and the other one had a family engagement tonight. One of the officers that is here tonight is Officer Swenson. Now, without reiterating and going back over, I won't make you say anything. Without reiterating what's already in the memo itself, I'll expand upon it. Sarah and I actually went to recruit school together. We've been at this business for about 20 years now, and Sarah started off in another agency, came to us a couple of years into her career, and has had a couple duties and responsibilities outside of patrol work. But to try to reinvent yourself, doing the, kind of the same thing year after year after year, can be challenging when you've been doing this about 20 years. One of the things that, or a number of the things that I think has really been interesting is Sarah really took this last year to kind of redevelop herself, which I think shows a lot about her commitment to her personal development. For example, she has been, she will now be the first officer without a supervisory rank that is now taking over our CSO program. Soft spot in her heart because she was a CSO 100 years ago. I know, I always, you know, I said we started at the same time, so it's just as bad. In addition, we were kind of in a bind towards the beginning of last school year, and we needed someone to cover one of the schools as a school resource officer, and Sarah willingly changed her entire life around her kids' lives, her husband's life, and ended up filling in that position for a number of weeks until that person who was assigned to the position was able to come back. That commitment to the department, the city, I think is just very reminiscent of what Sarah's capable of. In addition, she found herself in a number of situations this past year, one of which when she was just on routine patrol, driving around, and happened to see a teenager on the water side of the Racine Street Bridge who was threatening to kill himself, she was able to basically talk him off and get him back on the other side of the rail, and we got him some assistance. So, Sarah had a, an interesting year, to say the least, and we wish her luck as being one of the nominees this year. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, the other two nominees that I won't go into their items as it are out here, but they are in the council packets, just in the interest of time, were Investigator Stephanie Gross and Investigator Pete Sawyer. In addition, during Police Week, I also introduce officers that have joined our force over the last year, and that officer who we have today is Officer Joel Nelson. Joel, see, like I said, we try to do it once a year, but Joel just missed a cutoff. He came to us last June, so he's almost been with us for a year now. Joel actually was a CSO for us as well, but Joe, as you can tell, or Joel, as you can tell, is a little bit older in life. He's not one of those wet behind the ear, 22-year-olds that, that we often have, which there's nothing wrong with wet behind the ear, 22-year-olds. He's a wet behind the ear, little older than 22. This is a second career for Joel. Joel actually owned his own construction company, and in the downturn of economic issues, he decided to go back to school, and he had always had this calling in life to become a police officer. Really had an appreciation for Manassas specifically and really wanted to be hired here, and we were fortunate enough to pick him up. He's, like you say, almost a year into it, six months left, gets off probation, and things will really start to soar. So, thanks, Joel. I don't know if I want to say anything?
Sure. Just want to thank everybody here to give me the opportunity to work for the city. I've enjoyed my 11 months here, looking forward to a great career here. The department, I couldn't ask for a better department to work for. Other officers that I work with, just a great family atmosphere, and just want to say thank you for the opportunity.
So, in closing, I had mentioned we had, you know, just over 14,000 incidents last year. During each of those incidents, what we really strive to do is be a good reflection upon the city. We realize that we're ambassadors of the city, and we're very visible in the community, obviously. Or the vast majority of what you, of what we do, you're not going to see on TV, you're not going to read in the newspaper. 14,000 incidents, that'd take a lot of print, so, and a lot of things really aren't newsworthy. We have had a number of incidences, though, that we kind of classify as those low-frequency, high-risk events. They amount to about 1/10th of 1% of our incidences. And last year, in addition to the Tressle Trail, we also had other calls of shots being fired, people fighting resulting in substantial injuries, the suicidal subject that we talked about on the Racine Street Bridge. And what we've been finding is most of our use of force issues come with people that have mental health issues, that are trying to harm themselves, arming themselves with a weapon. Fortunately, those have all resolved themselves without any major injuries to officers or those citizens. In all those incidences, we are just really seeking justice for those that have become victims and provide assistance that, to those that see that they have no way out. Of all the situations, the routine calls for service, I'm very proud to, of the work that our police officers do and for the community. We're not here asking for attention or praise. We are just here simply asking for your continued support. Thank you very much.
Okay, Chief, even though you're not asking for attention or praise, I'm very proud of our police department. I think that we have a police department that has an attitude that they want to solve problems. They want to make our community better, whether it's mental health issues, traffic issues, neighbors, neighborhood issues, domestic disputes. I mean, you're always there trying to solve the problem, trying to help people work together, and trying to make our community a better place. So, I'm really proud of what you're doing, and I want to present the Police Week proclamation to you as well. And it says, "Whereas National Police Week was initiated by President Kenny, Kennedy in 1962 in recognition of those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others, and whereas police officers serve our community by safeguarding life and property, by protecting citizens against violence, disorder, and deception, and by protecting the weak against oppression, and whereas the Manassas Police Department continuously provides a vital public service protecting our community, and whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Manassas Police Department, and whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated the week of May 15th through May 21st as National Police Week, now therefore be proclaimed that I here do proclaim the week of May 15th through 21st, 2016, to be National Police Week in the City of Manassas, and further proclaimed that May 15th be observed as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers throughout our nation who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of those fallen heroes. Thank you for all that you do for our community."
We'll move on to item two, which is the Minutes and Communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time, I make a motion to receive and put on file Minutes A through E and Communications F through L.
So, motion a second. Is there any discussion? Kevin, just so you know, I can't see your light very well, so make sure that if you have something, let me know. Yeah. As the police chief was saying, it's also National Public Works Week this week, and we do have a pretty incredible group of people that work on our public works department, and we do also have a proclamation for National Public Works Week. "Whereas the effectiveness of the employees who staff public works departments and provide quality products and services is materially influenced by the citizen's attitude and understanding the importance of the work they perform, and whereas public works infrastructure, facilities, and services are of vital importance to the health, safety, and well-being of the people of this community, and the support of an informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities and services, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are dependent on the efforts and skills of public works employees, where it is important that our young people know that public works has rewarding careers, from people who envision future communities to engineers who design them, to operation and maintenance of the facilities, infrastructure, and systems that protect and enhance our quality of life every day, and whereas this year's theme, Public Works Always There, showcases the pervasiveness of public works, communities depend on public works, and the men and women of the profession that are always there and ready. Therefore, be it proclaimed that we do proclaim the week of May 15th through 21st to be Public Works Week in the City of Manassas, and call upon our citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involving and providing public services to recognize the contributions which public works employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And being that this is Mr. Radke's last year as our public works directors, I think it's really kind of important that we recognize him as well as our employees and some of the things that they do, things like diggers and dents to let the kids know what it's like to be a public works employee, some of the great efforts we do in plowing, some of the interesting programs that we have, like the rear yard drainage program that other communities don't have, just the dedication that our staff has. I'd like to present this plaque to you as well, Mr. Radke. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The consent agenda this evening has five items. The Minutes to approve from the Common Council Meeting of May 2nd, the Board of Works, Board of Public Works recommendations from May 7th, May 2nd, we'll get this eventually. The first, the payment to Vinton Construction for the downtown street walkway and electrical improvements, Mill Street, Main Street pedestrian link, in the amount of $146,120.70. The recommendation to award contract unit 2016-02, including alternate bid aid to Northeast Asphalt for new street construction and reconstruction, concrete curb and gutter, concrete sidewalk, asphalt pavement within parking areas, and eight-foot-wide asphalt trail and storm sewer for Sixth Street, Ninth Street, Grandview, Manitowoc Plank Road, Manassas Utilities Office parking areas, and Community Way in the amount of $893,042.40. And the recommendation to award the Washington Street Elevated Water Tank Repainting Project to V&amp;T Painting LLC in the amount of $260,000. And the Plan Commission recommendations from May 3rd for the certified survey map at Community Way. Does anyone wish to have any of the items separated this evening? Alderman Benner?
Item number three, please.
And Alderman Taylor?
Item two.
Do we have a motion for the remaining items? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 1, 4, and 5.
So, motion a second. Could we have a roll call, please?
Motion carried on roll call 780.
Item, item two is the payment to Vinton Construction. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item Number Two, the payment to Vinton Construction Contract Unit 2016-01.
There's a motion a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Taylor?
As the projects are finishing up here, I was wondering when the dumpster enclosures for the Broad Street lot are going to be complete and their locations.
Director Radke?
The dumpster enclosures are, are not part of this contract, but we have plans to finish those this year with our own public works crews. The They, there will now be two locations for the dumpster enclosures. The one is, you might be familiar with, west of the park, the new parking structure in the northwest corner where the dumpsters are located currently, and then the reciprocating location will be east of the new structure in the southeast corner of the eastern portion of the parking lot, again, where the dumpsters, I believe, have been relocated to, or they will be.
What do you think the timeline on that is?
I would just be venturing a guess that it would be midsummer, but I can see what our schedule is with our other projects and give you a better idea.
Are we looking at just a chain-linked fence with inserts?
No, we were not looking at that, but it's part of the problem is finalizing something, but that was not in our plans.
The attorney's poking me pretty hard over here that we're getting off the agenda. If we could put this on the, on the next meeting, it's a report.
It's part of the parking ramp.
It's not part of this payment, though, and I would agree with her that it probably really isn't, but we'll get you the information, Alderman Taylor.
It's fine. Well, let's get on it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 80.
Is there a motion for item three? Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I make a motion for Consent Agenda Item Number Three, the recommendation to award contract unit 2016-02 to Northeast Asphalt.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mark, I just, I saw maybe it would have been more appropriate to talk about this in Communications, but I haven't seen this before. It was my understanding that this was in, it was all an easement, and yet we're asking each property owner to sign a permit for us to get on their property. Is this kind of a common practice?
It is a common practice for us. We didn't always used to do it, but for the last number of years, we have done that as a, I think, a good general practice if we're going to be entering someone's property, even if it is to complete a Public Works improvement project, that we get their authorization to be on their property. Most of these occasions are for proper grading matches. If we're redoing a sidewalk or something, you need, you need the additional space to put the forms in for the sidewalk, and then you need to provide a reasonable grade in matching the existing lawns and/or driveways. Sometimes we have to go back on a driveway on the private portion. So we do ask for that authorization through these written, what I think we refer to them as construction easements, and they're just a temporary document that represents a temporary right on the city's part to enter their property to complete the project.
Okay, and if they don't sign it and send it back?
We really haven't had that issue. We haven't had them, send them back timely all the time, and then that's a means for us to contact them and let them know what we want to do. Another good reason for doing this is it gives the property owners and the residents an alert that something is going to be happening, even though we do send out letters immediately before the project, this lets them know that we're going to be coming in your neighborhood doing this work, and we need your authorization to get it done right.
We haven't seen anything where people are landscaping in the way of this at all or anything like that?
We have. We try to work with it as best we can. Sometimes we've had to have them remove it if it's absolutely in conflict with what our improvement is.
Yeah, I haven't got any emails or phone calls yet, but...
We've had a few calls already.
Have you? Okay, that's good, I'm glad you shoulder those.
Yeah. But I'm glad you asked, because it isn't necessarily a standard practice. I know for all the DOT projects, they absolutely require it, and we've been doing it for, like I said, the past number of years.
Okay, so we're not unique in this process?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 80.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for May 3 through May 12. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for, move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of May 3, 2016, to May 12, 2016, in the amount of $2,082,023.06.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 80.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for the 2015 through 17 licensing period. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications in the 2000, for the 2015 through 2017 licensing period, as listed under approved in the Police Department's memo dated May 12, 2016.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 80.
Item three is a Class A liquor license application for Manasha Fest Inc., doing businesses Festival Foods. Jason Stingle is the agent, and Jason is here this evening. If anyone has questions, do we have a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Class A liquor license application for Manasha Fest Inc., Festival Foods, 1355 Oneida Street, Manasha, Jason Stingle, agent for 2015, 2016 licensing year.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 80.
Thank you for coming tonight, Jason. Item four is acquisition of property at 305 Shoot Street. Do we have a motion, or do we have discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for acquisition of property at 305 Shoot Street, recommended by the Planning Commission.
So motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
So what are our future plans for this, to acquire this property? Even though it is a good price, I'll admit that, I just, I would like to know why, why we want it.
Mr. Engelbert?
So we were informed by Winnebago County probably a number of weeks ago that they had acquired this lot on back taxes for the amount of $2,666. I think that it would be an important lot to acquire for future development. Now, there are no specific plans for what that may look like at this moment, but I feel it's advantageous for the city to jump at these opportunities when they present themselves. If we don't, and if at some future point that land needs to be acquired for some sort of development, it will be a lot costlier than this figure in front of us. It's zoned in the C2 Central Business District, which is aligned with the rest of our commercial core down here. In the comprehensive plan, it is mixed-use commercial core. We're not seeking to change that at this moment, simply to acquire the property.
For the, we're taking this out of the appraisal sub-account. What it means we need this for an appraisal in the future, and where are we going to get the money then?
That was the most similar account that we had to take the funds from, so we don't always use those funds. If we did need an appraisal at some point in the future, we'd have to look at if there was other funds available within the community development budget at that point.
Were neighbors contacted at all, see if they wanted the property for any reasons, or, because I just don't like seeing this come off the tax roll, and we're not making, getting any money from it, and our track history with buying property is not very good, and look at the lot across from the, the post office, it's been vacant for how many years now? Is there any contact?
Yes, Winnebago County has approached the City of Manasha as to whether or not we want to purchase this lot. They do not approach the property owners, to my knowledge.
If this is sold to property owners, it would be sold at market value through the county, not at the back taxes issue, and as Mr. Engelbert said, this property likely will be necessary at some point in the future, and it will likely be much more costly than $2,600 in the future. So when you have that opportunity, we may have to be looking in the future several years out, but when you have those opportunities, I also believe it's prudent to take advantage of those opportunities. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the neighborhood's in a transition area, and the price of it from the county is, you know, we can't beat the price, and, not that we do it too often, but I think we need to acquire certain properties for the benefit of the public, and certainly with the baby boomers coming and the housing that we have in that area represents the senior population of the community, and I look at, we had an opportunity to buy empty property across from the library for a little more than this property. Last week, it started turning into a parking lot now. There's a fish shanty parked on the property, there's a boat parked on the property, and it's across from our public library, which we probably have $10 million invested in. And I think a city's somewhat represented by when somebody's driving through a corridor and they see this, it, to me, it looks pretty, pretty shabby, and I'm not happy about it. I would have purchased that property across from the library. There's a couple other properties in the area, I think, too, that we need to act on, but this is certainly one. We have a community center possibly that's going to be with the Tremania Hall, we have taken up half their parking lot, there may be an opportunity for more parking in this area, and certainly I respect what you, what you're saying, Alderman Zalinski, we haven't had a real good track record with, with that, but given the price on this, I think it's a good opportunity, and also too, I was approached by a party that they wanted to build a garage on that property, and I don't think building a garage on the property is in the best interest of the community, so I would, I would, I'm going to vote for this project.
Alderman Collier?
This property is a little different. It's not buildable, nobody could build a house on it no more. The only people that would be interested would be either neighbor, and that would be for a garage or something else, but bang for the buck, and looking at the future, you cannot deny this is the best deal I've seen on anything downtown in a long time, and I think we'd be foolish not to go forward and buy this property.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 71.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. Item 1 is Resolution 16, adopting the Winnebago County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve Resolution R-16-16A, Resolution Adopting Winnebago County Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan, 2015 through 2019. It's a five-year update, as introduced by the mayor.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 80.
Item L is appointments. We have one, the appointment of Jeff Engelbert to the Nina Manasha Fire Rescue Fire Commission for the term of 6/116 through 5/119. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Jeff Engelbert, as dictated by you.
Is there any, second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Item N is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public wishes to speak?
Just a few comments. Coming up next, I believe you're going to be discussing Fox Crossing. To me, just as a citizen of Manash, I think it's really unfortunate the way this has turned out and the way it probably will end up. Looking back, it appears the town, the former town of Manasha and the city have been like the Hatfields and McCoys for, you know, way back before my time. I wish things could have worked out that we could have actually merged together. I think we would have been, you know, a force in the Fox Valley, I think, you know, we could have really gained some respect, we both would have gained, you know, growth areas, they could have gained swimming pool and full-time fire department, and, you know, we have the senior center, we have a lot of things to offer that they're not looking at, and I think going forward with these pockets of town that are remaining, I think it's incumbent upon the city to sell ourselves. We haven't been doing that, to let these people know, yes, you can go into the Fox Crossing, but we have a lot to offer here, and coming into the city, you may gain something, you may actually like it, and actually, to really lay out the differences in the tax base, because that's the big excuse I hear, but when you look at just road assessments, the town or the village does assess for road repair and replacement, and the city does not. That alone is a huge difference, and I think garbage collection, and there's, there's a lot, they do a lot of fee things, so I think a good apples-to-apples comparison is in line, and sell ourselves a little bit, so, other than that, what we're faced with is being a landlocked community, and that's why I think it's imperative that going forward, we not succumb to mistakes that we've made in the past, and we really make really smart, intelligent, long-term goals of what we want our land used to be. We can't be doing, you know, storage sheds and, and things that are not going to generate a tax base. It's not going to be self-sufficient. We have to really look at this, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one, do we have a motion to recess? Alderman Benner?
Make a motion to recess the committees.
Motion, a second. All those in favor? Opposed?